The February 27th meeting of the City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will be called to order. Roll call of the members. Mr. Bacilli.
President.
Mr. Camerata.
President.
Mr. Corin.
President.
Mr. D'Angelo.
Present.
Mr. Tucker is absent. Mr. Colometto.
Present.
Quorum is present. The first order of business is application A 1301. This is for Kids Only After School Inc., 194 Essex Street, Salem, Mass., requesting a parking variance to enable the appellant to construct a second-floor addition to an existing commercial structure to further expand the existing structure to operate an after-school program facility on lots 66C and 67 at 85 Broadway Revere in a GB zoning district. For the edification of the audience, a member of the zoning board of appeals will not participate because of a potential conflict of interest, which leaves one, two, three, four members to hear this matter this evening, and it will require the affirmative vote of four members to grant the relief requested. Proponents to the first application? Mr. May? Want you to come first?
Do you want to come first?
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Daniel Rizzo, 35 Rowland Road, Revere, Massachusetts. I'd like to speak as a proponent for this project. Many of you may even know the applicant, Debbie Neeland. She's been doing business in this city, serving children of our community for many, many years. When she first proposed this particular project to the city, I was supportive and continue to be supportive based on the fact that they have done a terrific job, and they do what they do especially well. They're taking a building that, you know, has, over the years, changed its usage, you know, from time to time, but really never made any significant investment in the property. As you can see by the rendering, this is going to be a great gateway, a great entranceway into the city of Revere while still continuing their mission to serve the children of our community. You know, they are looking for some consideration on the parking, but I believe a lot of these programs have varying times, kids coming and going, and so I really don't believe at the end of the day, in spite of the fact that they don't have the parking that's required, I don't think you're ever going to see a real problem come to fruition with this. So, in the aggregate, I think this is going to be a terrific project, and it's my hope that the zoning board of appeals can see their way clear to grant the relief requested. Thank you very much.
Mr. May, did you also want to speak to item O 13-3?
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. 15 Undine Street, that is a situation where it's basically going to be a home that's going to be rebuilt on the existing footprint. It's going to add zero additional impacts to the neighborhood. It's going to be the same exact usage as it has been, you know, in years past. So, it's taking a blighted piece of property and replacing it with a brand-new building. So, you know, this to me is what we're trying to do. It's our philosophy that we all share in this administration, and that is, one building at a time, we're going to take, and we're going to, you know, hopefully upgrade, you know, these blighted properties, or properties that haven't been maintained, or have had fires, or whatever other issues that they may have had, and now turn them into, you know, useful, you know, attractive pieces of property that we can add onto our tax rolls. So, I am supportive of that project, and I would ask for your consideration on that also. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, members.
Proponents to application A 1301?
Members of the board, my name is John Fester. I'm director of economic development in the city of Revere, and I just want to be put on record that I am in favor of this parking variance. I spoke with Debbie Neeland about this, about the project on numerous occasions, and we just feel that this is something that really coincides with the revitalization of Broadway, where currently we have a Broadway advisory committee, which Debbie has been a part of, and we put it together, a master plan, and this fits very nicely with the overall concept of what we're trying to do on the central business district. I think it's aesthetically pleasing. It's something that the operation is, is something that we were looking for in the city of Revere, and this coincides with the goals that we have. So, I just wanted to come up, and from a development perspective of the city of Revere, I just want to be a proponent on this particular variance. Second, while I'm here, on 15 Undine, I concur with the mayor. I am also in favor of that as well. They're going to demo the existing structure there and put something nice that will be aesthetically pleasing and that would really enhance the area as well. So, I just wanted to be put on record on that as well. Thank you.
Any further proponents to application A 1301?
Good evening. My name is Sean Donahue. I'm an attorney. I apologize if I've violated protocols. Is it all right if I just come up and speak? I'm not sure. I just stepped into the room, so, thank you. Thank you. Again, my name is Sean Donahue. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant in this matter for Kids Only After School Incorporated. My office is located at 88 Black Falcon Avenue in Boston. We're here, as you know, on an application for variance at the property located at 85 Broadway. Just to give you a brief overview of that property, I was, the, there's a single-story structure on the property, which is approximately 50 years old, sitting on that corner lot located at the corner of Broadway and Revere Beach Parkway. It's a fairly well-sized lot, 10,711 square feet, to be exact. There are 11 parking spaces on the property, and it's situated in the general business district. The lot is situated both to, adjacent to what I believe to be commercial and residential zoning districts. Many, if not most, of the, I'll strike that. What we have planned here is a, is a, is a project that certainly, in our opinion, benefit the city of Revere, particularly the youth in the city. And I have with me Mr. Manuel Tavarez, who's the architect, who could give you a brief overview of what it is that we're looking to construct. Essentially, what we're looking to do is add a second floor on the existing single-story structure, which will require a parking variance. In any event, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tavarez.
Hi. My name is Manny Tavarez. I'm the architect of record for this project. 200 Broadway, Linfield, Mass. is the office address. So, I'll try to hold this up if everybody can see this. This is the site plan. The building is in this color, kind of a bluish color there. We have some green space where existing, the existing right side of the building has a parking area, and we're going to remove that and make that a green space. On this side, the parking is going to stay as is. We're going to put, we're going to make sure it's properly done in terms of landscaping and some alignment. So, this is all parking, about, we got 11 parking spaces here, and there's going to be some new trees and some landscaping on this solar area here. Right now, the requirement for the parking is 40, trying to see what it's 41 parking spaces, and we're proposing 11 based on the existing conditions that are there. The building consists of a, the building consists of a first floor, which will be a kind of an eating area. We got the administration offices, the bathrooms here, a library, some classrooms back here, and a kitchen. And the second floor, which also, it has an elevator going up, connecting the two, the second floor, will have a gym area, a dance area, and a science area, and an additional office space, and some storage, and so forth. The total building is, as Sean mentioned, is about 8,000 square feet. So, these are, if you can see, the building is much easier to see than the color rendering, but if anybody had any questions on the elevations, we'll have the front elevation, the Revere Street elevation, I don't know if you can see it from there, but, and then the parking side elevation here, and the rear elevation is this one here. So, the building will be a state-of-the-art facility with all kinds of, everything that's needed in terms of energy. We're proposing probably put some roof, roof panels on the top, roof, I'm sorry, photovoltaic panels for solar energy, I mean. And you can see the materials on the front. We're trying to use some stone, natural stone on the tower area with some sculpture of the kids, which we'll have, as you can see there. And then the EFS is the part, you'll see all the striped colors, the cream colors, and the bottom will be a, some sort of cement board siding. So, the whole building is going to look brand-new when the whole package is all finished. So, basically, that's what you see, a tower there, which is a stairway that goes up into the, connects actually the roof and all the floors. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to hear. I didn't want to make it too complicated.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention what's unique about this proposal is that we're dealing with children, children who aren't of age to drive. And, well, I guess that's sort of a redundant, children who aren't of age to drive. I don't think any children are. But in any event, but I guess what I'm getting at is, with the minimum off-street parking requirements, as Mr. Tavarez said, requires 41 off-street parking spaces, we're dealing with a program where there are children, and we have a transportation plan that we're seeking to implement in conjunction with this program, which I have someone who could address. The, where the use, the proposed use, insofar as relates to the available uses here within the city, would fall within the day nursery use. And it will be licensed through the state of Massachusetts as a childcare center pursuant to general laws, Chapter 15D, Section 1A, as it's defined therein. I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. I do have the executive director of the program here who could sort of give you an overview briefly about what the program has to offer.
Thank you very much. My name is Debbie Neeland, formerly Debbie Grasso. My roots are from Revere. My father's Joe Grasso, class of 1946. I'm from Endicott Avenue, and so it gives me great pride to be able to build a facility here in the city to support the needs of children. I'm the co-founder of For Kids Only After School Programs, and we founded this nonprofit myself and my sister. Both of us were public school teachers at the time. And the reason why I got involved in after-school programs was because I was a working mother myself, a full-time working mother, raising three children, and my children needed a place to go after school. And so, for that reason, we started For Kids Only back in 1984. The mission of For Kids Only is to provide after-school learning and care for children so that they can grow up to be productive citizens and give back to the community and to those of us who are aging, and also to support families who need to work so that they can help grow our economy. And so, and finally, to support city growth and safety so that we can prevent crime, we can give children the confidence and self-esteem to say no to drugs. Our program services kindergarten through grade eight. So, we are servicing children that are age five up to age 13 primarily. And the facility is health and fitness in terms of its focus. We will have a nutritional cafe for children, so every day after school, we'll be able to provide them with a healthy snack. We've already engaged into a partnership with Project Bread and Project Snack. The United Way Mass Bay has taken us on as a mass, as an affiliate, and so they have committed to support us through this endeavor. We'll also have an organic garden, so children will be able to grow healthy vegetables and fruits. We'll have, it will be all Wi-Fi access, so there'll be technology there, because as you know, children need technology now to learn. So, they'll be able to get help with their homework using the computer, and we'll have a beautiful library, state-of-the-art library with all of the needs that they have to make gains in today's learning world. We'll also have a art room, where there'll be opportunity for yoga and dance and arts. And we're going to have a room that's called a STEM room, which stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, so that we can empower these children and give them the skills that they need to be scientists and go into the technology field, and be mathematicians, and help be able to make a difference. And finally, a good emphasis and focus of our program is about those skills that children really need in order to be successful. How to resolve conflict peacefully, how to work along with others, how to be members of a society, how to give back to their community. So, we'll have a huge community service learning component as well. And we also hope to have an intergenerational program where we will bring in senior citizens and specialists from the community to help these children learn and grow, giving them tools and techniques, and teaching them about their own jobs in the, in the city. So, thank you so much.
Any further proponents?
Mr. Chairman, Sean Donahue again. I'm sorry to belabor this point, but I do have some materials that I would like to submit to the board for your review. Those, some of the materials regarding our proposal, and one thing I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, in your zoning ordinance, Chapter 17.16.020. With respect to, again, in your zoning ordinance, 17.16.020, the use regulations of this title should not prohibit the use of the land buildings and structures for, it says, educational and for educational purposes on land owned or leased by a religious sect or denomination or by a nonprofit educational corporation, which, which we are. So, the, as far as the use, I know we're not here on the issue of use, but on the issue of variance, I would just suggest that by your own ordinances, it seems to have some support for the educational use of the property in that it provides some flexibility from your standard zoning regulations. I do have just one last individual. If I could just have him come forward to discuss a transportation plan in conjunction with this particular proposal?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Lawrence Keegan, 194 Essex Street, Salem, Massachusetts. If I could just take a moment to describe the transportation. All the children that will attend the after-school program, which is from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., that's when the children will occupy the building, they all will be transported on a staggered timeframe so that we certainly do not wish to have any problems in the street as far as blocking traffic or having buses lined up. That certainly is not going to happen. During the course of the school day from 2:00 to 6:00, many of the children are picked up by their parents. Some of the children are picked up by vans and brought home. And again, it's all staggered. I won't take time, but we have done studies as to the times the children all leave, and even though there might be 120 children there, during those four hours, from 3:00 to 6:00, the children are constantly leaving because their parents, we provide the service for their parents so that they can work. The parents come home, okay, pick up their children, and obviously, take their children to their home. So, once again, by 5:30 or so, we're down to 25% of the original population. And again, there should not be any traffic problems at all. We, at one time, had a youth in motion down where the Good Diner is, right on that intersection, and running the same program at a maximum of 40 students, and we never had a parking problem whatsoever. We never heard from any city officials that we were causing problems in the streets by having cars backed up. It was very smooth, and we didn't have any parking spaces at all. But speaking directly to the variance, my last comment would be that we go on a ratio of 13 to 1. For every 13 students, we have one adult supervisor, teacher. As a result of that, it comes down to approximately nine employees would only be there at any one given time. At the max, if all nine of them drove a car, we would only need nine spaces. And I would add to that, that some of the people that work for us live in the city of Revere, live close enough, they take private, public transportation, or they walk. I don't think we would ever fill that parking lot more than five cars. Yes, sir?
In regards to the busing, is this just for local-area kids for the city of Revere?
This is for the city of Revere, yes.
Small cities coming here.
No, no, this is for the city of Revere.
And the hours of operation, again?
Well, we do.
Close to you. And the hours of operation are still 2:00 to 6:00, or is it 8:00 in the morning till 10:00?
No, 2:00 to 6:00. 2:00 to 6:00. But I would just let Deborah speak to the matter of, all the children from Revere will come, but we are contracted with the city, the state of Massachusetts, and she can, you want to comment on that?
Well, just to answer your question, the children that we service are school-age children, so they're in school all day. So, they don't get to us until school gets out, and there's some schools in the city that are extended-day schools, so they even get out at like 20 of 3. Also, we will be open on school vacation, 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night, and we're open in the summertime, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00. But remember, the children drop off, parents go to work between 7, most of them, they're between 8 and 9. As far as your question regarding, do we service Revere children? Yes, that's our priority. We do have a contract with the Department of Early Education and Care to provide for children under supportive care. That means that if a child is considered at risk because of an abuse and neglected situation, the state may refer that child to come to us until, while their case is open. And on occasion, some of the children, very limited, but on occasion, we might get a child from another community nearby where they cannot find a place for that child to go after school. Those are short-term cases that open and close, and we have no control over that. But we've had a long-going relationship with the department, it used to be DSS, now it's the Department of Children and Families to provide. But in answer to your question, the focus is on Revere city children, yes.
I thank you for listening to me. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, we'll now take opponents. Are there any opponents to this proposal that wish to speak? Hearing and seeing none, this matter is closed. The next application before the board is application A 1302. This is the application of Common Penzidi, 76 Vane Street, Revere, requesting side and rear yard variances and rear yard coverage and open space variances to enable the appellant to construct a 20-foot-by-40-foot detached accessory structure, parking deck for four off-street parking spaces with understructure storage on Lot 594 at 125 Vane Street, Revere, in an RB district. Proponents? Mr. Penzidi? Name and address for the record.
Common Penzidi.
Could you describe the proposal to the board?
Well, it'll be a structure with parking beneath the structure, and there'll be four cars on top, tandem parking, two in front, two in back.
And this structure is reinforced concrete?
Yes.
The size of the structure is 20 by 40?
What was that, sir?
Size of the structure is 20 feet by 40 feet?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else you would like to add to the record?
No.
If there's no further questioning, any questions from the board to the applicant? No? Thank you, Mr. Penzidi. Are there any other proponents to this proposal? Any other proponents? No further proponents? Are there any opponents to this proposal? Anyone opposed to this proposal? There are no opponents to this proposal? The next application before the board is application A 1303. This is a special permit application of Martin Henry Pepe, 15 Undine Avenue, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to raise the existing single-family structure and reconstruct a new non-conforming single-family structure with a second-story addition on lots 58 and 59 at 15 Undine Avenue, Revere, in an RB zoning district.
Members of the board, Joseph Cotojio, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicants, Henry and Martin Pepe, who are seeking a special permit approval to allow them to remove the existing house at 15 Undine Street and replace it with a similar single-family structure. The property, as it sits on the lot now, is a non-conforming structure. We have initiated this application before the site plan review board received approval to seek a special permit here. They have determined that the alterations that are being made, or the renovations that are being made, would require special permit approval. The lot itself and the house that sits there now is serviced by all required utilities, has access to everything that is needed. There is nothing that has to be installed or added. The structure also has a existing driveway area that will remain, that is ample size to house at least two, probably three cars. And the structure that is proposed is a single-family structure. It is going to be maintained on the existing foundation. The only difference on the foundation is that the present house is, exceeds, encroaches onto a paper street in the front. That encroachment will be eliminated. Other than that, we would propose to use the existing footprint. We believe this application can be completed without any negative impact on the immediate neighborhood. We feel that it will improve comp sales in the neighborhood by eliminating an existing dilapidated structure, a structure that's in ill-repair and on the border of not being suitable for habitation. Replace it with a new structure that will increase the tax, increase the comp area, which will benefit the immediate neighborhood. We would, again, request your approval, and we're here to answer whatever questions you might have. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions from the board? There are none? Any further proponents to this proposal? Any further proponents? Hearing and seeing none? Are there any opponents to this proposal? Hearing and seeing none? This matter is closed. School. In this matter, the chairman, Mr. Tucker, is absent, and one other member of the board, for purposes of possible conflict of interest, has indicated that nonparticipation in this matter and will be declared absent, which leaves four members of the board present this evening to vote. Four votes are required for approval. It is the custom and tradition of the ZBA to offer to appellants the opportunity to continue this matter for one month to the next meeting of the board, at which time the, it is anticipated the chairman will be present. Five members would participate, and four votes would be required. If the applicant wishes to elect the prerogative of continuing this matter, that is a possibility. If not, we can proceed with the vote.
Thank you. Yeah, on behalf of the applicant, Sean Donahue, we'd ask that you proceed with the vote.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bocili?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Camerata is absent? Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted. The next matter before the board is Application 81302, the application of Common Penzetti for various variances to enable him to construct a 20-foot-by-40-foot detached accessory structure. Question now comes on the granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bocili?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Camerata?
No.
No. Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker is absent? Mr. Colometto?
Yes.
Yes. Four votes, one, two, three, four. This matter is granted. The next application before the board is Application 81303, a special permit application to enable the appellants to raise the existing structure and reconstruct a new non-conforming single-family structure with a second-story addition at 15 Undine Street. Question now comes on granting the relief requested. Mr. Bocili?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Camerata?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker is absent?
Yes.
Mr. Colometto?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted. No further business before the board.